Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's meeting. It's the Adults Health and Active Lifestyle Scrutiny Board. I'm Andrew Scapes, I'm a councillor for the Beeston Holbert Ward and I am the Chair of this meeting and this board more generally. Just to let everyone know, as always, this meeting is being recorded and live cast to YouTube, so people can watch at their leisure or re-watch if you wish. There are a number of journalists and students from Leeds Beckett University have come along to observe, you're all very welcome. Hopefully you'll enjoy this meeting and I understand your 800-word article after this meeting. I'm sure we'll have something interesting to, you'll have something interesting to write about. Just at the start, for people at home, we're going to do some introductions and we'll start by with the board members, if that's okay, and then I'll welcome other people to the meeting at the appropriate point. So I'll start to my left, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Kevin Ritchie Bramley and Stanley Ward. And do send your dissertations to the Chair, or if you're marking. Welcome.
Councillor Stephen Hallroy, Adslane Robinhood Ward.
Good afternoon, all. Councillor Bramley, Horstford and Rawdon.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councillor Taylor and I represent Chapel Arlington Ward.
Good afternoon, Councillor Mahalia Fransmair for Mowtown in Meanwood.
Good afternoon, everybody. Nice to see the room full for once, so thanks for being here to all the students. My name's Councillor James Gibson, I represent Cross Gates in Winmore Ward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Jane Misenko, I'm co-chair of Health Watch Leeds.
Good afternoon, Councillor David Blackburn, Farnley and Wiltley Ward.
Good afternoon, Councillor Lyn Buckley Allwoodly Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Councillor Caroline Anderson, I represent Adeline Wharfdale Ward.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Angela Brogdon, the Principal Scrutiny Advisor to this board. Thank you.
Super, thank you very much. So can we start by going through the usual standard items of business, Angela? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So in relation to item one, just to confirm, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under item two, there are no items for exclusion of the public. Under item three, there are no late items. And in relation to item four, at this point, members are asked to declare any interests in accordance with the council's code of conduct. And I shall take silence as none, thank you. And in relation to item five, we have received apologies to Chair from Councillor Layer. Thank you.
Super, thank you very much for that, Angela. Okay, we're going to move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. I'll start with any matters of accuracy. Does anyone want to raise, members, any members want to raise matters of accuracy? Okay? And in that case, are we happy to take them as a true copy? Yep, I can see nods around the room, so I'll accept that. Matters arising, Angela, do you have any matters arising?
Just to confirm, Chair, under minute 51, so the additional information that was requested by the board, board members did receive elements of this yesterday. There's one outstanding request, so that will be circulated shortly. Thank you.
Super, thank you very much. Any other matters arising from members? I can't see anyone indicating, so we'll move on to item seven. So this is really important update, there's a new CEO at the Leeds Teaching Hospital Trust and Brendan is here today. Really appreciate your time and look forward to hearing from you. I think at this point, we'll just give everyone else in the room a chance, around the table anyway, a chance to introduce themselves. That'd be really helpful. Just to remind you, if you can bring the microphones a little bit closer to yourself so we can hear you up the other end of the table and turn off the microphone when you're finished. And welcome to Councillor Flynn in particular, in your new post. Sorry for cutting you off a minute ago, please introduce yourself now.
Shall I go now? Hi, I'm Emma Flynn, I'm councillor in Wheatwood and very newly appointed executive member for health equalities and wellbeing, so really good to be here, thanks.
Hi, everyone. Victoria Eaton, Director of Public Health for Leeds.
Hello, I'm Brendan Brown, I'm the new Chief Executive at Leeds Teaching Hospitals.
Afternoon, everybody. Magnus Harris, I'm the Chief Medical Officer at Leeds Teaching Hospitals.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Beverley Geary, I'm Director of Nursing for Leeds Teaching Hospitals.
I'm Helen Lewis, I'm Director of Pathway Integration for the Integrative Care Board.
Afternoon. Megan Rowlands, Programme Director for the Home First Programme.
Hello, I'm Sam Prince, I'm Director of Operations at Leeds Community Healthcare.
Hello, I'm Deputy Director for Adults and Health, I'm Shona MacFarlane.
Good afternoon, I'm Caroline Barrier, I'm the Director for Adults and Health at Leeds City Council.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Brendan, I understand you've got a few slides which I think Angela's going to bring up on the board and over to you.
Thank you. Well firstly, thank you for inviting myself, Magnus and Beverley for the conversation today. There are a few slides, I wasn't going to go through them laboriously because I think you may have questions from the communities that we serve and that you represent that we may need to pick up. So what we've tried to give you today is a very transparent account of where the organisation has been and some of the actions that we're taking in response to that. If, probably helpful if we get through the slide deck, which we are absolutely committed to not take too long on, and then we'll open that up for questions if that works for you. So Angela, I think I've got to do a next slide please to you. Okay. So this is basically a roadmap of the regulatory inspections that the trust has been starting, well, over a year ago in December 2024. Next slide please, Angela, if you wouldn't mind. Looking at this in detail, obviously there are onsite inspections into our maternity and neonatal services and the organisation was served warning notices under the Health and Social Care Act. Our colleagues in the Maternity Safety Support Programme, a national programme, also raised significant concerns and reports were received in June of this year. In addition, the trust also had a CQC well-led inspection which raised significant concerns. And if we go to the next slide, we have been issued enforcement notices from NHS England in response to some of the breaches that have occurred as are detailed. And if I get to the nub of the challenges that we're facing, the notifications and concerns were raised around our overall safe care and treatment, our premises and equipment, the governance of the organisation and our staffing. And the reason, I'm just going to move on to Magnus now, I felt it was important, rather than going through slide by slide just about the regulatory enforcement, actually what our patients and our communities need to know is are we safe? So we're going to talk about that in the next few slides. Magnus?
Thanks, Brendan. We can stay on this slide, thank you. I think if I was going to summarise, the major change is creating the right conditions for people to share openly, frankly and honestly their concerns. And we're talking about the patients we represent but also our colleagues within LTHT. And we can no longer be comfort-seeking, we've got to be problem-sensing organisation and that's the big, almost cultural change that we need to bring about within the trust. On this slide, there's a number of technical descriptions about how we seek assurance on a day-to-day, weekly basis. There's a senior leadership huddle and within that, we talk about any incidents that have occurred, we talk about escalations. The red flag alert is actually a nomenclature from the NICE guidance and that talks about staffing levels, ostensibly midwifery staffing levels and when there's issues raised around that. Operational impact, so we've got two units, we've got a unit up both sides of the city, here at the LGI and over at St James's. Both units deliver different elements of maternity care and offer different levels of neonatal care, really happy to chat about that in the questions. Essentially, we've got to maintain safety on both sides at all times and there's a director-on-call process so that operationally we can divert should we need to across the city. Bev and I are meeting with the senior leadership team, both in neonates and maternity, regularly. Ostensibly, again, to create the right conditions for sharing of concerns. And weekly, I co-chair a quality meeting with Beverley. We talk about all the incidents, perinatal mortality reviews that have gone on in the previous week. The absolute acid though is, we've got to create the conditions where people feel safe to speak up. It's the psychological safety of teams and that's the main thrust at the moment. And Angela, if we could go on to the next slide, I'm going to hand over to Beverley.
In response to the CQC findings of last December, but also the Maternity Safety Support Programme that reviewed the services earlier in the year, we've developed an improvement plan. This was presented to the regulators two weeks ago. It's in draft at the moment, but obviously it is, it will be a working document that we will update on a regular basis. And when I talk to you about assurance for the board and the public, I'll go into a little more detail. Again, primarily, this is about ensuring our safe services are safe. And as Magnus has just said, there are a number of ways in which we review on a daily basis and in various depths. The other thing that is really important for us to address is supporting the women and families who previously experienced poor care. So you will know there is a Facebook group that is really active around women and families that have previously had poor experiences within our services. And as part of our improvement plan, we are committed to supporting these families. As well as our families, we need to support the teams. Magnus has talked about cultural work that we are embarking upon and ensuring that we've got the right workforce. Yes, we've got to have the right numbers with the right skills and competencies, but we also need to feel looked after and listened to because they're the experts in their fields. I think in terms of assuring the board and the public, we'll talk about governance in future slides, but we've already reviewed the reporting from ward to board, particularly for maternity and neonates, to ensure that there's a real clear line of sight. There is a new Perinatal Assurance Improvement Subcommittee of the Board that has been set up and approved by our Chair very recently and that will include partners. So Maternity Voices Partnership will be sat around that table. The Maternity Safety Support Programme representatives will be sat around that table and an NHSE Improvement Director, in order that we've got external scrutiny that can challenge and we can provide assurance to, and that will report straight to our Board of Directors. And as you know, that is in the public domain. Next slide, please.
Thank you. It was no surprise to any of us in the NHS that after we'd had the maternity CQC visit and NeonHCQC visits in December and January respectively, that we'd get a well-led domain for the entire organisation. The way a well-led domain inspection works, there's eight quality statements and you've got to be able to evidence and ideally with staff proving that you deliver on those eight quality statements. If we just go on to the next slide, I'd say it was worth sending this through. This is ultimately what we've been marked against in the well-led prep. I'm not going to read it out because you're all reading faster than I can actually speak. So you've finished. But I'm just going to hand back to Brendan for the next slide, thanks.
I think if I just go...
Just turn your microphone on, thank you.
I'm so sorry. If we just pause for a moment, I think what we've just gone through is probably something that you were aware of, as were our communities, that there has been a sequence of concerns raised in the organisation that have prompted a regulatory response. And I think the reason we put the well-led descriptor in was just to highlight that we can't disagree with that. We know that we haven't listened to our families as well as we should have. And we know that our governance and our escalation processes should and could have been better. So we're going to go on to talk about that in detail shortly, more about some of what we've described, but which we're being open and transparent about, the challenges that we are facing and the fact that this has been going on for a period of time. So if I just talk about this slide, I think it describes where we are. Are we consistent, effective and accessible in our systems for ensuring that we handle complaints in the right way? We know that our response to families has not been as compassionate as it could and should have been, but equally, it's not been as timely as it should have. Our governance processes around the quality and safety of our services, mitigating the risks that we alongside every health organisation in the country face are properly evaluated and shared, hasn't been as good as it could be. And that we've not reviewed those systems as regularly as we should have. And equally, our staffing numbers and the way we've responded to the risk in our staffing hasn't been as it should have been. If we go to the next slide, Bev's going to pick up on the breaches.
Your, sorry, your microphone please, thank you.
Sorry, the detail was in the previous slide in terms of the regulations that have not been met. These are the actions that we are required to take under the Health and Social Care Act. We've got to respond to the CQC by November. As I said earlier, I think we had, I think it was two weeks ago, the meeting, the Quality Improvement Group, that is an NHSE-led meeting and CQC are sat around that table. We've already started, as I've said previously, around the work to address some of these breaches and we will go into detail as to what has changed already to offer some assurance to this group of individuals in order that, and also to the public actually, and patients that we are acting upon some of this. I think the other thing is that to appraise the board of is that we have set up regular CQC meetings, meetings with the CQC, I think they start in a couple of weeks also, so they will be holding us to account as well as our board and as well as our partners. Next slide, please.
Okay. So I hinted at this at the start of, in addition, in October, NHSE took regulatory action in response to the trust's challenges and placed enforcement notices upon us. The sum total of this is that we have a number of challenges facing the organisation which we are bringing together under one recovery plan. So that we, it's not about having a transactional action plan that we are going to rag rate, for instance, it's about having a plan that speaks to the regulatory enforcement but also speaks to the needs of our patients and the concerns that they've been raising. If I just go on to the next slide, Angela. Okay, and these were the immediate actions that we've taken and you might ask, well, why have we called this out? But Leeds Teaching Hospitals employs over 20,000 colleagues. Our colleagues are our community, our community are our colleagues. It's important that actually our colleagues are with us in driving through improvements in the care that they are delivering to both their friends and families. And we know that that hasn't been the case for all of the people that we serve. So these are the issues that we are highlighting to our colleagues, that these are the four pillars of our improvement trajectory, which is about how do we truly listen to our patients, communities and our colleagues, so that we're curious about the issues that are being raised. I think it's too easy in any public sector to hear an issue and assume that an action has been taken. Actually, what we want to be is more curious about why those issues are being raised or why they continue. Our leadership processes, as I hinted at, needed a review and that is something that the three of us are taking forward. And there is a narrative in the organisation that our colleagues are calling out, that it's too strongly defined by the financial and the fiscal priorities of the trust rather than the quality of the patients that we should be serving. And we have also seen evidence of racist and bullying behaviours that our colleagues are experiencing on a day-to-day basis. If we go to the next slide, please, Angela. Okay, so I'll go through this quite quickly if I can, because I think you'll want to get to some of the questions. I am new, we now have a full executive director team in place and we also have recruited to our non-executive director vacancies, which speaks to the inclusion and truly representing the communities that we serve across Leeds. We have reviewed our senior nursing structure, I think the CQC, for those who may have read it, called out that it was confusing and that lines of accountability weren't clear and that's something Bev has taken forward in her weeks here as our chief nurse. As I've said, we now have an improvement plan. The organisation didn't have one that would have been recognised and I think it's important that I call that out because it's there to see and it will be available in the public domain. We also have an improvement director working alongside us that has been seconded in from NHSE to look at the breadth of the improvement trajectories that we need to take forward. And Beverley as chief nurse has started a comprehensive review of our complaints handling process and that speaks to our curiosity. It can't just be about timeframes, it can't just be about the transactional response to a complaint, it has to truly be about the experience of our patients and why they have had to raise issues. And we are also out to advert for some of our senior leadership posts and one of those pivotal roles is substantive recruitment to our director of midwifery. But just go to the next slide, please, Angela. These are some of the operational issues that we have addressed and it speaks to Magnus' point about colleagues leading within the organisation. But one of the things, if I just move forward to the next slide again, and if I go on again, sorry, Angela, is this piece. This is what's important for me. Our women and our families were being directed to our complaints number and email address and for the three of us, that didn't feel appropriate. What we have now is an executive-led triage process. As you know, it was announced that we would be part of the national inquiry that was being led by Baroness Amos into 14 trusts across the country. We've now been taken out of that process as there is going to be an independent inquiry into perinatal care at Leeds Hospital. So but as part of that, we feel that we should be better at responding to families who are raising concerns. And I don't want to categorise those families, but there will be families who have experienced care with us previously that has not been to the standard that they should have received. There will be families who have had to fight to have their voices heard, who have been raising their concerns with the Secretary of State. And there will be women and families who are experiencing care in our services today. So what we have now is an executive triage system so that we can respond to those families quickly. You'll have heard language about the trauma-informed communication, but that is because there is trauma for our people in this situation. And for those families who have had to fight and indeed raise their concerns again, that's why we need to be better at understanding what that trauma will feel like for them. We need to put ourselves into the place of our families, not necessarily look at things from our perspective. We have looked, as you will be aware, there are other organisations across the country who are facing challenges. So what we've reached out to do is learn from best practice. Because there are examples where this has been managed and responded too well and there are areas where this hasn't been the case, but where there is best practice that we can learn from here in Leeds, that's something we're looking at. And I think the final point again just speaks to how do we ensure that our communication and our engagement is in the space of our families rather than in the space of us as professionals? If we go to the next slide, please, Angela. And I did just wanted to touch very briefly, because I know we will get to the questions now, but it's important that I call out, in our multiple reports, you will have seen evidence of concerns being raised by our colleagues about racism and bullying. And we can't shy away from that, that is the experience that our colleagues and some of our patients are talking to us about. And again, we've sought external reviews to look at the equity, diversity and true inclusion agenda across the organisation. That has been owned at a board level, our board are leading that conversation and are facing into that conversation, so we shouldn't be shying away from it. If I go to the next slide, please. There is now an improvement plan, as I've said, this details where this has been taken to and who is scrutinising it. It will be reported to our board and therefore in the public domain. As an organisation, we are held to account on a monthly basis by NHSE and other stakeholder colleagues against the action plan that I've described. And to be frank, we need to be better in our response to that and work differently and at pace. If we go on to the next slide, Angela. Again, this speaks to some of what we've described around the CQC and some of their interaction with us. There is interaction directly with us as an organisation, which Beverley alluded to, but also in the Quality Improvement Group and committee that I've described, that NHSE are leading, the CQC are part of that. We will be re-inspected, we will be re-inspected not only in the services that were rated as either needing improvement or inadequate, but across other service domains as well. If I go to the next slide, please. And then just before we take questions, I did just want to call out some of the detail as we understand it, from the independent inquiry into perinatal care here at Leeds Teaching Hospitals. As I alluded to, at the beginning of October, as, well, actually, it was in September as I started with the trust, it was announced that we would be part of the Baroness Amos National Review. That has now changed as the families' conversation with the Secretary of State has resulted in them being heard and an independent inquiry being called into the maternity failures at Leeds as the Secretary of State has called out. The independent inquiry was formally announced on the 20th of October. At this point, we haven't had any further detail on what the terms of reference or who will be chairing that inquiry will be. But what I can say, as I've said publicly, we will fully engage with that inquiry. What we've set up at this point is an office in order to respond to it, the learning from other organisations across the country, is that this will require a response at pace around some of the freedom of information requests that will come through, the subject access requests and indeed some of the investigations and reports that need to be concluded. And I'm keen that we respond adequately, compassionately and at pace to families within the inquiry. As more information is released, we will be happy to share that with you, but at this point, as much as we know. So we'll probably pause there if it's okay and take questions from you.
Thank you very much, Brendan, and thank you for your candour there. I think it's really helpful to have an honest assessment of where you are. And so if members want to indicate, if they want to speak, that'd be helpful. And just at the start though, Brendan, so I think, no, I think when the previous CEO came back last July specifically, one of the things I think the board brought up rightly and was discussed a lot was about the culture and I'm glad Magnus touched on that. And I guess the culture isn't, we hear about the culture of maternity, but the fear is that's more widespread. And so I guess there's a, from our perspective, certainly my perspective, there's a question about how are, what are you doing in addition for like the whole system to try and change the culture in terms of the listening piece? And for example, I understand from people I know working LTHT that there's like a weekly call for staff where they can raise questions and that sort of thing, I think would be quite helpful just to just touch on a couple of those things, because I think it's important that there is a culture shift and it's important for us to hear some of the things you're doing to try and change, that so the whole breadth of the organisation are being heard. And I think, I think you've acknowledged that sometimes maybe that people at one end of the spectrum, the least senior, haven't been heard when they've raised concerns. So is there anything else you're doing in that space? Thank you.
I think the point's well made, but we have over 20,000 colleagues working for us across five sites. I've been out in some of our wards this morning where I've been incredibly impressed by the culture, but that isn't to say that every one of those 20,000 colleagues experiences a positive culture across the organisation. Your point though was, how do we set the tone as an executive team? And for me, it's very, if we simplify that, we need to do the right thing for the right reason to get the result for, the right result for our patients and our colleagues. And what you've described is something that we've set up around colleagues can access the executive directly. We do, your description is the weekly LTHT Live whereby the three of the executive can take any question from any members of staff. Because my view, which is shared by the executive and indeed by our board, is that our colleagues should be able to talk to us about anything and raise any concerns that they have, but equally give us suggestions about how we can improve. So for me, the cultural shift, which we are not going to achieve overnight, is about how we are truly a psychologically safe organisation, as Magnus described. is about how we are truly a psychologically safe organisation, as Magnus described. One that is open and transparent, one that acknowledges its mistakes, but one that embraces its colleagues and the work that they do.
Yeah, thank you very much for that, Brendan. Okay, I'm going to bring in councillor Gibson first.
Thanks Chair, and thank you for this report, Brendan, which is incredibly earnest and transparent. And I think, you know, holding your hands up where there have been difficulties in the past. I'm going to talk about my personal experience of maternity services at Leeds Teaching Hospitals. I've got a son, two years old. He's celebrated his second year just at the end of last month. He, to be, to be very brief about the quality of services that we receive, from start to finish, 95% was exemplary. The staff were wonderful. The service couldn't do more for us, couldn't be more responsive to our needs. There was an issue with our sons, with the pregnancy, which was that our son was in this lowest percentile. Well, after about six months kept dropping, he ended up in the lowest percentile of weight. So my partner needed to be induced. So we went to, went to LGI. Everything, everything went absolutely fine. And again, really great service that we received from all the staff. My partner had an epidural, she had some pain relief. And about 12 hours in, unfortunately, things did start to go wrong. Heartbeat for baby and for my partner started to increase rapidly. By this point, in my opinion, as an ex-social worker, she did not have capacity when she was passed a legal form stuck in front of her and said, sign this, otherwise you can't go into surgery. She could barely hold up a pen. So of course I had a look at it, took it away from the consultant who had put it in front of her and insisted that she sign it. And said, you know, can I sign this? Can I read and sign it? She said, no, it has to be from my partner, who again, after 12 hours and having lots of medication, with alarms ringing around her, around the room, was panicking and having a gun put to her head essentially and said, either you get the care that you need to make sure that your baby survives, or you sign a, some sort of legal waiver, was in my view, an absolute disgrace. And, you know, it sounds such a small thing, doesn't it really? But for me, it put a really dark cloud over that, what should have been the happiest moment of my life with my son being born. You know, it's funny, the nurse said, do you want to take a photo as it comes out? And I left my phone in, I said, no, I was that angry, said, no. And then I realised, I suddenly came to my senses and I was like, right, okay, actually, no, get over it and get the photo. So fortunately, I've got the photo. But that's how angry I was and it upset me and my partner for a long time afterwards. So I put that to you, is this common practice? And hopefully it's not, and we're going to put a stop to it. The other question that I have, which is much more around the implications of what have been some of the problems that we've had in this particular unit is around the government's recent announcement around advanced foundation trusts. And whether or not we would, I know we're not in the first tranche, but will we be considered in the immediate? Given that the powers, the additional powers it would receive, I don't know if we already have those with our current status. But certainly the additional powers that we could have following a successful application of an advanced foundation trust to an integrated health organisation. Obviously, everyone's going to get there by 2025, or at least that's the government's ambition. But are we going to be held up because of this? Has that been thought about? So two parter there.
I think Magnus might be able to give you more of a technical response to your first question. But if I start back, because I'm not sure about the conversation about acceleration to super foundation trust status, I don't know yet. And I don't know, being honest, whether our regulatory findings would pause that. I think the first tranche have been announced and yes, it'd be interesting to see how that plays out. That doesn't say we haven't got the ambition to progress, but I'm really not sure at this point where that would sit in light of our regulatory findings. But I think it speaks to how we step into a leadership space to address the concerns that are happening. That should count to an application to being a well-led organisation. To your first point in your experience, I'm genuinely sorry for that. Magnus will have much more of a technical response than I can give on it. But what I would say is that that just speaks to how are we more curious about what our patients and their families need? I completely understand the medico-legal issues that we have to address, as I think you probably did. But how are we more curious about putting ourselves in your perspective? Did you want to come in?
Thank you, Brendan, thank you for your question. And I'd just like to say, sorry, that isn't the experience you should have had, nor your partner should have had. And the way I think about quality of care, there's three domains, is it safe? Is it effective? And what was your experience like whilst you were with us? And we can argue about the safe and effective, but the experience isn't what you should have had. And it's really clear, one adult cannot consent for another adult in any medical procedure. And if your partner wasn't able to understand and give consent, then it's the best interest decision that's made. And generally speaking, we would obviously talk to you, but you cannot actually legally consent for another adult. So we make a best interest decision, discuss that with you, discuss that with your partners best we can and explain the whys and why for's, but ultimately legally, that's the decision making. Does this go on now? I'd like to think not. Can I absolutely give you a hundred percent guarantee? No, I can't. But I like to think that we're creating a culture where people can speak up and actually raise concerns, be innovative, safely. And that's the psychological safety that I've described we're aspiring to. And I talk to anybody that'll listen within LTHT, I want us to be an outstanding organisation. And that's partly the CQC badge, and I'm not going to be naive about that, I'd like that very much. But outstanding care is knowing that when you come in with your partner, that she's going to be looked after completely properly with or without you by her side. And that's my mark of outstanding. We've all got family in and around Leeds who will use our services. And I need to, I need them to have, to be confident in the knowledge that we will deliver that best quality outstanding care. And we're starting that journey now. But just to go back to the beginning, I'm really sorry, that's the experience you had.
Yeah, so I totally understand the, you know, the technicalities behind it. As I said, I was a social worker, but what it felt like a shortcut, you know, rather than taking the best interest decision and getting my partner to sign it felt like a shortcut to me, which is probably why I was so angry about it. And, you know, as I just want to reiterate, as I said at the start, 95%, it was that one issue. Everything else, I could not, I could not be more appreciative and in admiration of all the staff and everything that went on. But it's just that one thing, but it, you know, it's a big thing. And, you know, it's getting the small things right, isn't it? As we all know, that's the difficult thing to do. So now, you know, let's, let's put that in context of the 95% and then just how great our staff are. And thanks, thank you to all the staff, if any of them are listening, for everything that you do. But let's just try and iron out the small things, thank you, or smaller things.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. And maybe we can have a follow-up email correspondence about the process. Because I think that's really difficult and personal topic, but it's also really important to get right. So thank you for that. Okay, councillor Anderson, next place.
Thank you Chair. Do you have an estimate or roadmap in terms of how long you think it will take to restore trust in LTHT maternity services? And how are you going to measure that? And then how often do you intend to review the improvement plan that you showed us on your slide? To ensure it's doing what you expect it to do? And will you be brave enough to revise the actions if you feel it's not achieving the aims as quickly as possible?
So if I start with the last question, if I can first, will we be brave enough? Absolutely. I think what we've got at the moment is a transactional action plan. So what we needed to do was capture the breadth of the number of actions that have been raised from the multiple reports and inspections that the organisation has faced. What that should mature and to your word, be brave, I think it needs to be more agile. It needs to be much more thematic. And it needs to answer perhaps some of the points that were raised in the first question. It's about the safety aspects and the regulatory aspects of the care that we deliver. But it also needs to answer the questions and the concerns that our women and their families are raising. I think the action plan, there are a number, I didn't put it, well, it was up in some of the slides, but it is now reviewed regularly. We are formally held to account on a monthly basis by NHSE. But our board, our subcommittees of the board equally hold us to account. I hold a weekly improvement meeting with our executive and senior leadership team to go through this at pace. And then you talked about how long will it take to garner trust? I really don't know. I really don't know because there is a lack of trust. There is, there is, there is a huge amount of support for the organisation, but there is a lack of trust from women and families who have experienced not only poor care, but a lack of compassion in our response. So therefore, it would be naive of me to expect them to trust me or the organisation again, based on some of their experiences. And at this point, we don't know how far back the independent inquiry will go. It could be 2010, 2011, 2012. So for me, that's why we have to focus, in my view, on doing the right thing for the right reason to get the right result for the people that we serve. It's about being open and transparent. Where we haven't got it right, it's about acknowledging that. But acknowledging it in response to what families are raising rather than from a professional perspective.
May I just come in on the measurement aspect? Sorry to interrupt. So the three domains of quality I described, so safe, effective and patient experience, that's the way I try and frame how we be able to prove or not prove and seek assurances. That the single most useful metric I look at is our staff survey results. So it's how many staff are actually filling in the survey in that particular clinical area? And then what the staff engagement score. And it's really clear and chimes across all our specialties. That's one metric. We review every single perinatal death. So that's every child after 22 weeks up to 28 days who dies and every stillbirth. We review every single one. There's a qualitative and quantitative assessment of each of those deaths. And it's called a perinatal mortality review tool. It's graded A to D. We look at the, at all the gradings. Cs and Ds are where lapses in care may have contributed to adverse outcomes. We look at those. We're in the process of commissioning an external review of our perinatal mortality data for the year 2023, which sounds like a long time ago, but that's the last year we've got completed data. And the embrace data is actually, it's run through a team in Leicester hospitals and a team at Oxford University. So it's completely external to LTHT. We're commissioning a review of that data at the moment. I think the tricky bit is though, how we listen to families, mums, dads, birthing people who've experienced the services. And we've got a fairly blunt tool called friends and family test, which is five questions. That doesn't do it for me. So that what we're trying to do, and I'm engaging with the Humber Side Yorkshire Innovation Network, is to do a semantic analysis of what everybody's saying across all social media platforms. And we're just in the process of working with them to actually understand how that would play out for us in Leeds. But it's a different way of listening to what people are saying about services. They're saying to friends, they're saying to colleagues, they're saying on social media so that we can listen in a different way. And I think we'd have a suite of KPIs there that would be able to evidence or not what the service is actually delivering in those three domains.
That was going to be, my next question was, do you review every single birth though? Not just poor babies that have died? Because obviously, surely you review good outcomes as well as bad to make sure and follow up what you did right as well as what you did wrong?
I think medically, we've got a tendency to focus on poor outcomes. And we feel that that's where our attention should be focused. I think it's a really valid question. I don't think we spend as much time as we could looking at what's gone right. And instead of almost having a negative, we always, we talk about never events in the health service. I'd be quite keen to flip that round to talk about always events. And you're right, we do review some, we don't review enough, I'd say.
Thank you very much for that, Magnus. Okay, councillor France Meehan, next place.
Thank you very much. Just want to say thank you for the presentation, but also thank you to all the staff at the hospital. Because regardless of what happens, everyone works just as hard, they work their fingers to the bone. And it is a, you know, it can be a thankless job, but also it's a very difficult job. And I just want to say thank you to all those members of staff. Just want to say welcome to your new role. I've got two questions, one of them kind of like follows on from councillor Anderson's is, I've lost it. I'm just curious basically, how are you gonna, how are you going to manage the change in culture regarding the, yeah, I'm going to be honest, the toxic culture within the hospital in reporting these things? And the other, the other question was basically, when it comes to inclusion and belonging, is that board going to be reflective of the different cultures within the hospital? But also the different bands? Because the different bands of staffing within the hospital reflects a different work experience. So that's the question. And also just something for Magnus. I'd love to know, you've kind of like skirted over, you've mentioned the survey, but you've not mentioned the return on completed surveys from staff? And how on earth do they fit that in with their day-to-day pressures of work with, you know? They're doing everything they can with less resources. So those are my questions, thank you.
So you're absolutely right, the two metrics I look at are the return numbers and the delta. So what is the change between last year and this year? If, and generally speaking, what you find, if the number of returns is going up, your engagement score goes up because people feel more inclined in that situation. The survey takes 10 minutes. We've got six weeks to fill it out. And the way we get metrics every week, so I know exactly which of the clinical support units are doing well. And we've got some up to 70%. These are where the leadership teams are really engaging with staff. So it's, it's a bit of a virtuous circle in a way around the culture that's created. So do we enable people to do it? I like to think we do. Do they always feel like they've got enough time? You're right, they probably don't feel that every day.
Women can do it in their lunch breaks.
It's 10 minutes, yeah.
I think if I can answer your question about the culture, I think this speaks to our leaders and our managers and how. It's easy for me to say this is the culture that I want, but how do we empower our leaders to lead in the right way? And I think it goes back to our honest, open and transparent approach. So there's something that will be, I know it's a big organisation, but that shouldn't stop us communicating and having a conversation with our leaders, for instance, on a weekly basis, where we go through what's happening, not only from a technical perspective, but also, as you said, from a cultural perspective. But I think we need to be honest about where it's not working. I've been to a ward this morning where you could palpably feel how positive the culture was. So there's something about learning from that ward leader to say, what is it that you're doing? And what is it that you've been doing for a number of years to bring the culture of your organisation to the level that I felt? How can we learn from that and take that across the organisation? It isn't just about our clinical departments though, it's also about the vast number of other departments that we have. And let's just call it out, we know that not every colleague in our organisation is having a positive experience. So it's about responding to that. It's about, we talk about in the NHS, some of you may have heard about a freedom to speak up, but it's freedom to listen up as well. What do we do in response to concerns that have been raised? Bev, I think you wanted to come in.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, so as alluded to the LTH live, which is the weekly exec-led Q and A for all staff. And Brendan encourages people to do shout-outs. So they celebrate, and it's any discipline, any banding across the organisation to say, this is working really well. Because I think focusing on the positive, which goes to the other councillor's question, is also, and what went well, is really, really important for staff morale. So celebrating what's going well, I mean, I'm going to a celebration event next week for our healthcare support workers, which are historically low banded staff and the backbone of the organisation part of that, you know. So I think that some of that work is really positive. And, you know, in response to the questions about the culture, that will help, help improve that.
And we need to be, your other question was about, are we truly representative of the communities that we serve? And that may be true at certain levels within the organisation, but it's not true across all of it. And that may be true at certain levels within the organisation, but it's not true across all of it. So some of this is going to take time. I'm not sat here saying that we're going to have this addressed within a short period of time. I think that would be naive of me. And equally, I'm not sure that means that the changes that we're making would be embedded.
Thank you. I think you're just going to ask that last question again, so thanks for answering that, Brendan. Okay, councillor Ritchie next, please.
Thank you, and thank you as well for your openness and frankness today, accepting things need to change and things are changing. My question is, what impact are the changes that you've implemented already having? Are they, are they being demonstrated? So I'm thinking about the senior staff huddle, the staff red flag. You know, have you seen an increase in reporting, any incidents avoided? And how can we, because one of the asks of our board is what further scrutiny work? But how we could keep perhaps the chair updated, how that's developing and improving? So that's the first question. The second question's a more general question. I know with the presentations around maternity services, but the report is a CEO briefing about your priorities. And it's around the current resident doctors' strike. I noticed one of the issues that was raised during an interview with the press was, it wasn't just about pay, but it was about conditions and equipment. And that particularly struck me, the delays that resident doctors have accessing IT to update things and what have you. So could we have some assurance that the, the equipment and what have you is adequate within the organisation? And if it's not, what steps are you taking to address that? Bearing in mind a really important thing you said around quality versus finance and getting that balance right. And just one final comment on, I think Magnus mentioned using the consultant around the social media. I think you can get a very skewed perception from social media because it is the people who are angry that will, so while you need to hear about things, it doesn't necessarily reflect everybody's experience, but I'm sure the consultants are aware of that and will take that into account. But I do think it's important to make the point.
If I start with the resident doctors, I think that there is, this is a national position between doctors' unions and the government. But I think your point's well made. This is about what do our resident doctors need when they're working with us? And they are, some people describe them as a transient workforce, but whilst they may be transient and rotating around organisations, but whilst they're working with us, they're working with us. And therefore it speaks to, are they having the best experience whilst they're working with us? Not only from a training perspective, but just from a general day-to-day working alongside colleagues experience. There is a national mandate about a ten-point action plan for resident doctors, which Magnus is revisiting to say, okay, have we responded as thoroughly as we could and should have done? Have we been transactional? Have we really been curious as we've described earlier? We really get into the above what we need for our resident doctors? Some of this speaks to how do we engage, communicate and talk to our resident doctors? And it goes back to what I was describing about how are we truly listening to their experience? I think your point about equipment, I don't think that's just about resident doctors, that's across the board. Have our colleagues got access to the right equipment or the right replacement equipment as quickly and as readily as they can? There is a significant piece of work we need to do about our technical and digital capacity. But that's something that's ongoing. Your first point was about our trajectory for improvement. I think it's for you to decide as a committee, but if you want, I think having us here monthly wouldn't, wouldn't see the trajectory or the pace that you'd need, but we'd be very happy to have a conversation and report potentially in on how we are improving across the board. Originally, this conversation was about maternity and neonates, but I think with the chair, we felt it was probably more appropriate to have a conversation about, this is the state of the nation and this is what's happening across the Leeds Teaching Hospitals.
Yes, so thank you for that. Just to come back, could you say even totally without any stats that you are seeing a change? So for example, the opportunity for people to contact you as directors directly, is that, has your inbox shot?
I can tell you, so I, well, I won't comment on my inbox, but yes, it is. But it's not just about what comes in, it's what goes out, it's how do I respond? If we talk about LTHT Live, the first week we did it, and it's the same time every week on a Wednesday at one o'clock, we had over sixteen hundred colleagues. On average, we're getting anywhere between, we're getting an average of about eight hundred a week. But they're the ones who are watching it live, then they can watch it on playback. Again, they can ask anything they want to in that. And that's, I believe that's how it should be. Because there's only one of me and twenty thousand colleagues, I can't get everywhere, which is why we're doing it virtually. But it's having an impact. I don't want to say that's the answer to everything. And what we want to do is test that out with colleagues, probably in another couple of months to say, is this still working for you?
Thanks for that. And you're absolutely right. Yeah, it's what comes back. So you can write to, loads of people have experienced writing to politicians and not hearing anything back, and it's not good. And it makes you feel like you're not listened to, even if you don't get the response you want, at least you know they've heard you.
Okay, thank you. Jane, next, please.
Thank you. Welcome to Leeds, Brendan. And yes, in a challenging time. And thank you as well for your candour. And you're setting out a very valuable vision of what it should be like. So in that context, I'm going to ask a bit of a difficult question. So normally, if you've got CQC coming in, you do lots of, lots of internal kind of diagnostics. You know your own trust, you know what the issues are and where you're weaker. Were you surprised by what they found? Did you know already? And were you tackling it already? And if not, why not? So that's the first one. My second question is again about the culture because that is absolutely critical. And as you say, you've got twenty thousand staff, so it's a massive task to, to reset a culture. And I suppose I'm interested in what you're doing at board level. So are you throwing the challenge internally at board level? And making sure you're culturally aware and compassionate and able to listen? Because it starts there, doesn't it really? And finally, a broader question, will this impact on the hoped-for centralisation of maternity and the prenatal services?
So there's three questions in there. If I forget one, please come back to me. But the central, I'll probably start back as if I can. The centralisation, I think that's down to us and about how that's, I think the safety concerns and the concerns that have been raised should feed into that debate. But the reality is that will cost a significant amount of money to ensure we have the right services. That shouldn't mean it shouldn't happen though. So there's something about a pragmatic approach to that. And what money can we access, what capital money can we access in the short term to look at our maternity and neonatal services now? As well as something that consolidates. It won't just be about consolidating maternity and neonatal services though, it would be about the support services that fit around them. So it's a bigger conversation, but I think this should feed into the need for a different response to that and about the investment into Leeds. Your point about the board, I would say with confidence that the board are leaning into this. And the board, the conversation we've had with the board has been as explicit and as transparent as this about where we've found ourselves wanting and what board colleagues should be curious about. It's not about whether you're asking the right question. For me, it's, are you asking the right question and following up with the right response? Are you really seeking assurance or reassurance? And I am assured, being new, that we have a board who are looking at that in the right way. To Bev's point, you'll know that it's similar in most public sector organisations, you have a board and subcommittees of the board. In addition, we've asked the board to set up a subcommittee that looks purely at perinatal issues so that the board are appropriately curious and holding us to account as an executive against the measures that we've been describing. And then your question was, did we know? Well, I don't know because I wasn't here, but we know now. We know now, it's more than just the transaction of the regulatory response. It's more than just what you'll find in the CQC report. We also know what our families are saying. And therefore, that's why we've put all of this together to have the right response. And where we're not having the right response, we need to own up to that. If we're, if we're responding in a way that is neither meeting the regulation or is meeting the right regulation but not meeting our women's needs, then it means we're hitting the target and missing the point. There's something about doing the right thing here. I think what I'm saying is, and I might be getting to where you're going to go to, the CQC are going to come in. Are we ready for them? It's not, again, I don't think it's about being ready for them. It goes back to, are we doing the right thing for the patients that we're serving?
Well, I agree with your last point, but you, and I know you weren't here, but the organisation of the board should know. You shouldn't be surprised to find the issues with your culture and your staffing numbers.
Yeah, I can't comment, I'm not going to comment on that because I wasn't here. But as the accountable officer for the organisation, I can give this board assurance that the board are looking appropriately, not just about the numbers, but about the skill mix and what we're doing around it. I can talk about what we're doing rather than where we've been. That's it. That's it, Magnus.
I guess, without being too disparaging, I think there's a, there's an interesting change following the maternity inspection to a well-led inspection to a new executive team. And I think you can possibly extrapolate from that. Okay, councillor Bromley next, please.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you for coming and welcome your presentation and approach so far. I'm sorry if I'm sort of like almost sort of repeating a little bit in some edges of my questions. I just wanted to follow up firstly on something from the previous update. We wondered if the triaging was definitely able to cope with that, that system in place in terms of numbers? And if we could have reassurance that, that that's not going to then suffer and be overwhelmed just like has been experienced in this historical situation.
This was the triaging in maternity services?
Yes.
Thank you. So we triage according to a Birmingham Symptomatic Obstetric Triage System, BSOTS. I think it's fairly safe to say we haven't been able to pull the data out as readily as we'd want to. What I do know is there's a fifteen-minute time, clear criteria for when triage should happen. We're not hitting that as often as we should know that. And we're working through with our maternity assessment centre colleagues as to how to do that.
Thank you. So if we could keep updated with that, that would be really helpful. Thank you. So firstly, my first question is, with the word curiosity, I really welcome that being part of the conversation around feedback and approach. I just wondered if there has been, because there was an admittance previously that empathy fatigue was part of the diagnosis really for what was going on? And that that has caused the failure for complaints being taken seriously? So my question is, is there also training that has been given so that every layer has understood that that is what happened? To then recognise the signs of when that may occur again? Because at any point, overwhelm could occur with low staffing numbers and being overworked and not quite knowing or recognising it within themselves when it gets to that point. So how is it that we can then prevent that futuristic situation? And somebody could recognise it in themselves? And also, just with my second question there, the approach being trauma-informed, I think we would all say that we welcome that. I wonder if we could go a step further in saying that it would be like applicable to be women-centred? Sort of referencing back with councillor Gibson's experience with his wife birthing. I think we've understood as women for a long, long time that a lot of medical research has been very male-centred? And that actually the women's experience of what they go through is vastly not understood and/or accepted or evidenced. And so I think that maybe we could use this as an opportunity to say, how is it that we're making sure that our services are women-centred? And making sure that not only these experiences, which is such a tragedy, are being learnt from? But how we might be able to take good feedback, was that based on the experiences of women being centred in the approach? And how we can learn from that and take that moving forward? That's my second question. Third question?
Can I answer there? Because I'll lose the, can we just answer there because we're going to lose the point?
Yeah, sorry.
I think the point for me, and I know Bev wants to come in on this, but to your last point, I agree. And I'm aware that actually, for some of our families, partners and husbands, their feelings weren't acknowledged equally actually. I don't think we were compassionate to them. So I agree, but with an and, I think having a one-size-fits-all, which I think is probably the locus of your question, isn't appropriate. We have to look at individual families and respond to them in the way that they are seeking. I think Bev wants to come in on this.
Thanks. So I think going forward in terms of looking at our services and service development, we've got the maternity voice, maternity and neonatal voices partnership. So these are user representatives that sit at organisational level, we pay them. They also sit at ICB level and they sit at regional and national level. So there is a, there is a nationwide connection of this, of the maternity voices partnership. They will have a seat around our table. So the West Yorkshire Integrated Care Board MVP lead will sit around our sub-board committee. We will listen to the voices of women and their families. And that, and they will come in as a, as a partner in order that we can inform any service developments, but also to learn from good as well as poor experiences. Because we do get some really positive experiences, and we get really good feedback. But we absolutely accept that at this point in the organisation's journey to celebrate some of that would be, would be very insensitive. However, it's really important for other women who are going to use our services to hear some of that. It's also really important for our staff to be told actually, you're doing a good job. And we learn from the good and to your colleagues' comment, we also learn from the good as well as some of the really poor experiences of our women. So that's our aim in terms of making things partner, patient-centred, women-centred, particularly for these women's services. Thanks.
Thank you. And I would like to add that I had two very healthy babies at the LGI department and I'm very grateful to the staff there for those experiences. The social media side of it, so I think Magnus mentioned, and councillor Ritchie sort of fed back on that in terms of skewed and also validity, I would say, of taking the information just from social media and using that as part of feedback. What would strike me is, so I could understand the situation where families have just had a baby and it's not the time necessarily to go, oh, and I'll just fill in this quick survey. But there are services that are in touch with people once they've just had a baby. And so then that almost seems part of like ease that you would then add in, are you also okay while we're here to sort of just say, how was your experience? Is there anything that you would like me to feedback to the hospital at the same time? Because then someone's doing it on your behalf. And so then there's a sense of support while doing it, opposed to placing more responsibility for people to go off and do something. Yeah, I just thought I'd add that question to.
Just if I can, I think everyone has a right to express their opinion in however they want to do it. So I'm not uncomfortable with social media, whilst I'm not able to use it very well. Actually, our families have a right to express their views in whichever way they want to on social media. So I wouldn't want to denigrate from that. I think your points, it goes back to my earlier point, how do we apply our processes and our feedback, for instance, to individual families in the way that they potentially need? One, a questionnaire doesn't suit everybody, but it's also about how we do it in a timely way. How do we do things differently? How do we learn from people's experience? And I think you're right, there's also something about how other agencies gain that experience on our behalf, which can feel much more objective. But I wouldn't want there to be any misinterpretation of what we're saying about social media. I think Magnus's point was absolutely about learning from it. I think everybody has a right to express their views in whichever way they want to.
Can I just come in around the social media? So the platform I hope we get to use was used in South Yorkshire. And the decline and the semantic analysis of what was being said predicted accurately what happened in the what happened in the maternity unit in South Yorkshire as well. So there is an evidence base behind it. And it is overwhelmingly negative, but the friends and family test is overwhelmingly positive. And just to the, do we give people the opportunity to feed back? Anybody that wants to can have a consultant-led discussion post-delivery with a follow-up letter to describe what's going on. So we do offer that as well.
Thank you. Yeah, and I appreciate if you've given the evidence, the fact that previously there has been scenarios where that's actually shown correct. Intel, I would just say that, well, two points to it really. I think that people are detached when they're talking on social media and maybe very quick to give feedback, maybe in the heat of things want to say something. Or maybe, you know, you can't verify who the user is at all and that it's just part of something else. So, and we understand that in every capacity, don't we? And then so it becomes very important that people in media are able to report things accurately. I just wonder if we're giving too much weight to that side of stuff that isn't coming from a place of, this is what I really want to say to the people that I am feeding this back to. Is there a layer of sort of more of a, like a guesswork observation of feedback rather than actually a genuine response from families? And I appreciate that questionnaires aren't for everybody at all. However, people are, every person, every family, when they have a baby, they are asked questions after they've had the baby about their wellbeing, about how they're experiencing things. They're answering questions, whether they want more questions or not. It just sort of makes sense to make it part of that as a collaborative approach. And since we have family hubs coming in and we have children's services, we've got maternity care afterwards, I just, it just kind of logically makes sense for it to be incorporated, that's all.
I agree. And I'm sorry, the point I'm making about social media, I know those families have been criticised for their comments on social media, which is why I'm making the point that people should be able to express their views in whichever way they want. I think your second point was, could we look at this differently? Yes, we can. But I wouldn't want those families, if they're watching this, for instance, to feel that we're criticising anybody's view on social media.
Thank you for that. And I think that's good with shared views and comments. And I do think there's something about the validity that you're saying. But there's also, which I think is the right place for LTHT at this point in time to be really open to all criticism and be reflective rather than defensive. So I welcome that as well, Brendan. On that point, okay, briefly.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make it clear, I'm not talking about any of the families. When I talk, I'm talking about general social media use. And I think councillor Bromley's the same. So that is no way criticism of those families. People do have the right to use social media. I was talking about more of the general. I take the local high school near me, if I were to believe all the community comments on that, it'd be an absolutely disastrous school where I might actually know differently. My son went there and, you know, had a very good experience. That's the context that I think I was speaking and I'm sure councillor Bromley's the same. So I just wanted to make that clear and thank you, Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you, I take that. Okay, councillor Taylor. So councillor Taylor's the last person on my list. If you haven't spoken, you want to speak now, it's the time to indicate. Councillor Tay-
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, well-digested and ever. I've listened to each and every one councillor currently, you have asked my question. However, I had, not me, my daughter had the same experience, similar to councillor Gibson. The difference is my daughter is black, her partner is white, and she did not listen to. She was 10 days overdue, something like that. And she'd been going in hospital, great pain, whatever, from the Friday sent back home, back in, back home. The Saturday, she went in at 10 o'clock in the morning, barely speak, she was drug-stopped, whatever. And at this stage, they wasn't listening to him, they were listening to her. And I presumed it was looking at the colour as well. She didn't get treated the way she should be treated. However, his dad is a doctor and they were communicating on the phone from both angles. And his dad was saying, no, she should be having this and that and that. But he couldn't relate it to whoever was in charge. And this duration take right up until four o'clock in the early hours. And it was a black doctor who went in to see her. And he says, as soon as the doctor came, he says, this baby has to come out now. And the baby came out. She didn't know she gave birth. She didn't know she had her baby and whatever. Still, they didn't realise, because he was mixed brace, he was communicating with his dad to see the progress. When I went in to see her at 11 o'clock in the morning, she could barely move. No one assisting her. He was the doctor, he was the nurse for her, plus myself. And when I went back home, four o'clock, they said that she could go home. Now, she was going home in great pain, cesarean, whatever. The doctor went to pick her up and says to the nurses, did she have that? Did she have that? No, 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 she spent two extra days. So what I'm saying is, in early flat, there's a lot about EDI. Is it reflecting not only in colour, mental health, learning disability? And from all races? No disrespect to you, I'm looking at the table, it's three whites there. When you talk about EDI, what lays are there in the NHS? I've been equality leads in the council for two and a half years and I had more complaint from the black staff in the NHS and schools. Because the EDI, what you've said you have, I call it tick box. Just for me to read and say, oh, that's a good organisation, there is. We have Muslim ladies going in to have, give birth. Is all things in place for their culture respect? That's my question.
I'm not going to disagree with you. I think that was, so please don't think that what we've documented in our slide deck was meant as a tick box. It was because of the time that we had.
It's just like the social media. I didn't say yours were tick boxes.
No, no.
I said some of them are tick boxes that when we, well, others see, they just looked at it. Oh yes, that's a good organisation because they have a mixture. I didn't say yours were.
No, okay, sorry, I've misinterpreted that. But I think you're right. I think this speaks to how are we really curious? And how are we appropriately responding to people who are using our services? And my conversation in the organisation, if we're looking at ethnicity or race, is if, I think there are elements of racism that we need to address. Therefore, we need to lead a conversation that truly addresses it. And I have spoken recently to women who have had an experience similar to the one that you've described. This speaks to the work that Magnus and Beverley are taking forward with our clinical leaders about how they care for the people who are using our services. And your point's well made, it's how do we truly represent the communities that we're serving? I think it is much broader than ethnicity and race as you describe. And that's the way, I think what I'm saying is, I know there is significant work to do around that.
Sorry, Chair. You've talked about workload and you have X amount of staff. The previous staff, what was there before with all these ups and downs? Are they still in place? Have they retrained? Are there have any, anything to improve and work alongside the new staff that they are recruiting?
I think Beverley and Magnus can talk to you. There is a whole sequence of training and development opportunities that we're putting forward for our colleagues.
Yeah, I think you've just stole my thunder. So yeah, in short, yes. As I referred to earlier, the maternity safety support programme, which is the regulator, NHSE, of supporting us through that programme. There is some really detailed work. We've undertaken a diagnostic to understand what our priorities are, so we do it based on risk. We are getting lots and lots of new midwives in, but we're doing it staggered in order that we can support them when the newly-registered midwives. So we're supporting them into the service. We've got 24/7 preceptship programme, so there is always someone supporting them in order that, you know, they can practise safely and they can achieve qualified competences. But it's also, there is also training opportunities and programmes that are put on for teams and also for the people that have been there for some time. So it's really detailed. We've got a whole part of the action plan, the improvement plan, that is based on workforce and staffing. So it's not just about the numbers, it's about competency, it's about skill mix and it's about the team dynamic as well.
Also, there's culture as well, please don't forget that. And in Leeds, we've got different languages, so the communication should be right in there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take that last one as a comment, if that's okay, councillor Taylor. Just before I close, councillor France-Meir wanted to make a comment as well.
I just want to make a comment. Last week, I was at one of your hospitals and I should have been able to just pack up and go straight to my appointment. However, it took me 20 minutes because you've got Deliveroo drivers and taxis packed across two parking disabled ways. That shouldn't be happening, especially when you've got, what do you call them? Car park guards, whatever. Driving orders, walking around and just ignoring it. And for that reason, I was, you know, I was a few minutes late for my appointment and had to sit down for two and a half hours to be seen. So please do something about that, because if I'm having problems, then many, many other patients are.
So what, can I just ask, which site was it? Which? But you can tell me which hospital site it was.
Seacroft.
Seacroft, okay. So yes, I will take that back in the organisation and I'm sorry you were late.
Okay, thank you for that comment as well, councillor France-Meir. Yes, I'm just going to say a few remarks. So I think we've had a really somber conversation and a really reflective conversation. I think that's been positive. I'd like to particularly thank members who've shared personal experiences. It's really hard to share personal experience in a public setting. And I also want to thank Brendan and your team for being reflective and open to criticism and willing to learn. And I guess it feels to me like you feel that we're on the start of a journey and this needs to stay on our agenda. We need to keep an eye on this. We need to hear about how staff survey engagement is changing, different approaches you take to engagement with staff and how you feel the culture's changing over time. So really welcome the fact that you've come and been open and engaging and look forward to engaging more in the future. So thank you for your time. Appreciate that. I'm going to let you go and we'll move on to our next item. And I'm sure you'll be here again in the not-too-distant future. Okay, I'm going to move on to item eight, which is, yes, I know we're running behind time. It's my view, and it's my view that that was a really important topic and we needed to give it at the time. It deserved, ideally, when I first booked it in, it was meant to be an update on the maternity item and only be sort of a 15, 20-minute slot. But obviously, because of the new CEO and all the changes, I thought it's really important to have a longer discussion. So we're going to move, now we're going to move on to Home First Programme. So if you have the meeting pack, that starts on page 13. And I'm going to pass over to Megan to introduce this item. Thank you. I think you've got some slides and Angela's going to put them up on the screen. Thank you.
If you don't mind, Chair, it will be myself that's introducing this. But there's three of us that are going to be presenting the slides. We've not got that many slides, we'll try and whip through them because we'd like to leave a bit of time for questions and answers. This is an update. We've brought previous updates on our progress around Home First previously. This is specifically about the work that we've been doing across the health and social care system over the last three-plus years to try and improve people's experiences of and outcomes arising from them having to be admitted into hospital and then their experiences following discharge. And doing everything we can to improve people's outcomes so that they return back home rather than what was happening previously, ending up in long-term care or a place that isn't of their first choice, just as a default position. So we've been working over the years now on what was Home First Phase One. We are rapidly moving on to Home Phase Two. And this presentation overlaps both of those programmes. So the next slide there is around where we've got to. So as I say, we started the programme back in 2023. Our vision was very much to have a sustainable, person-centred, Home First model of intermediate care across Leeds that is both joined up and promotes independence. We've had some really good outcomes as a result of the programme and the changes in the way in which we work now as a system, one single system rather than different organisations, all contributing their bit to people's journey. And what this slide shows is areas where we have significantly improved based on targets that were set right at the start of the programme, but also in some areas where we know we probably haven't done, quite got there yet and there is still more work to do. So in terms of people admitted to hospital, there is a 604, fewer people admitted into hospital each year. Our target initially was 1,700 people. We know that we haven't really worked successfully enough on hospital avoidance, avoiding admissions wherever possible. And that's where Home First Two focuses. Some other areas that we've done really well include the number of people that are actually going home directly from hospital. 668 relative to our target of 400. And that's a huge benefit for people in terms of their outcomes. But equally, it's also had quite a significant impact on reducing costs to the system. So that, not that we're taking the money out, but that actually we're able to utilise that money on other people that need care and health. So it's not a saving per se, but it's an efficiency and allows us to use that funding for more people. Another area that we know that we've done really well but need to do more is the number of people that benefit from re-ablement, which we had the target of 397. Our data needs to catch up and we've done a really good job again of expanding re-ablement services. There are now joint services together between LCH and also adult social care in what we call an active recovery offer. And that also is work that we're continuing to build on and develop. So some significant targets, some really well-over-achieved targets, but other areas where we know we've got to do quite a lot more. And not least because of the demographics, more older people and also more complexity and acuity of those people that do go into hospital. So the next slide is a bit of a sort of lead-in to how we are moving to Home First Two. So Home First One was really very much about discharge and getting people out of hospital when, as soon as they were ready, following treatment in a hospital setting, getting them out and getting them home wherever possible. Home First Two is to really look at, how do we prevent the need for people to end up in hospital in the first place? How do we support people to remain living healthy and independent in their own homes? Or even if it's in a care setting? How do we ensure that people are not having to keep going to their GPs? Because we're identifying people who are prone to illness or falls or accidents or breakdown, family breakdown. How do we identify those people and work to support those people in their own community setting so that we can, wherever possible, avoid people having to end up in hospital due to some form of crisis or ill health? And so the work that we've been doing is very much around what we're calling neighbourhood proactive care. And it's very much part of our prevention work. And we've undertaken, so our objectives- have been to build on the Home First Programme that we already started back in 2023, focus on that prevention bit, and also to undertake an exercise which was a prevention diagnostic together between LCH and adult social care. We put some funding together to undertake a diagnostic, and we commissioned Newton to do some work. It was Newton that worked with us on Home First Programme. They were successful in the award of contract for the Phase Two diagnostic, and we have made some significant progress in the completion of that diagnostic. So the next slide, basically, these are the things that we're aiming for in our Home First Two Programme. Continuation of improved outcomes for people and for families, improving experience of staff, empowering staff to make decisions early, and independent of escalation, really improving medication optimisation, providing better continuity of care, ensuring that we reduce unplanned activity, so people don't end up in hospital in an unplanned way, reducing the number of people that are staying in a bed, be it in a hospital setting, or in our intermediate care beds, when they're actually ready for discharge and ready to go home, making sure that all the things are lined up so that they can go home in a very timely way, and they're not delayed in any way. And again, that helps with improving efficiency and maximising the utilisation of our bedded capacity, be it in an acute setting in the hospital, or in our intermediate care. And that is then also leading to an improvement in the way in which we use our very limited and very constrained resources, and doing it in a way that we have a focus around the Leeds pound, not this is LTHT money, this is LCH money, this is adult social care money, it's all health and care system money, and how do we make the best use of that for the majority of our local residents. I'll just hand over now to Megan for the next few slides.
Thanks very much, Caroline. So I'm just going to give a little bit more detail about the work that's going on. You've got further detail in the paper, but just to concentrate on intermediate care, which, as Caroline says, very much picks up from where we got to with the Home First Programme that we've reported here previously. We've got a partnership work plan that covers seven areas that you can see here on the slide, so ranging from work to support people in the kind of 24 hour period that might be before an admission to hospital, or potential admission to hospital, through to supporting people in that period post the hospital discharge, and on into community rehabilitation and onward services. It's a really important bit of our system, intermediate care, and we've got a real partnership approach to improving it. So we've got work going on in all of these seven areas. And we can, for instance, we're continuing to roll out our active recovery offer. We've implemented a single care record between health and social care, which is really innovative and working really well. And we're tackling particularly a really complex process around supporting people and families who are moving on to a 24 hour care setting following a hospital admission, and that involves lots of work across our partnership to simplify the process, work with people and families to make that as smooth, as straightforward as possible. On the next slide, you can kind of see where we're up to now. So we're part way through this year. Obviously, we've just taken a snapshot in terms of our performance against our key performance indicators that we're measuring. There are some encouraging signs here, but what I would say is this is a snapshot rather than a embedded position, and we also need to take account of how demand patterns may shift, particularly as we go through the more pressured times through the winter months. But you can see that we're showing some encouraging signs against our targets that we're aiming for here in terms of reducing the time that people spend in hospital and community beds when they don't need to be there anymore, reducing the time that people spend waiting when they're going on to a 24 hour care setting. So we've got further work to do here to develop our work plan into the next phase. The ambition and vision that Caroline set out is one that we still hold true, and we do know we have more work to do here. So an update here, happy to take questions on this area. But if I go on to the next bit, this is our focus on neighbourhood proactive care. So as Caroline said earlier, we know that we can support people who may end up as potential users within our intermediate care setting with a more proactive preventative approach. So we've been working particularly to look at how we can support around 47,000 people living in Leeds, around 5% of our population, with our hypothesis that if we can wrap around a multi-agency, multidisciplinary support that meets their needs, we can promote independence and better outcomes, and avoid, reduce or delay the need for more intensive expensive services. So we're currently working with towards 600 to 900 people by the end of this financial year, and we're working across Leeds. So we're working with every area, every primary care network, every local care partnership to implement this way of working. And we're learning loads as we go along. So on the next slide, you can see a sort of summary of the model that we're working on, which is a multi-agency network team that works in local places with people where they live. And it brings together, you can, I mean, you won't be able to see the detail on this slide, but lots of different people from lots of different agencies that wrap around the person, depending on what their needs are, and also their family and carers and people that are important to them. I think really important to note the role of care coordinators within this. So this is an existing role in our system, who often are the people who will have the time and are able to develop a trusted relationship with a person to really understand what's going on for them and what matters for them, and support them in accessing the right match of services that meet their needs. And obviously, it's really important, if you, on the next slide, you can see what we're doing in terms of evaluating this approach, because this isn't a brand new way of working. We've done work like this in the past. But what's really important, if we're going to implement this at scale, is that we really understand what's working well, what we could improve. So we've got a very extensive evaluation framework. But on this slide, you can see the kind of key things that we're looking at, which is how engaged are our primary care networks and local care partnerships in this way of working? Who's involved in terms of the different agencies and staff? We're looking at impact for people, families and carers, both in terms of outcomes and experience. We're looking at the views of our staff and people working in those places to see how it's working for them and what's working well, what could be better. And we're also looking at how this way of working impacts on patterns of activity across our health and care system. So that ranges across all of the different agencies involved, so that we can really understand how this way of working changes access patterns, service utilisation patterns, and outcomes, past the standard.
Thank you. So the third pillar of this work is around the prevention diagnostic. And so we're doing lots of work around proactive care, around intermediate care. And we were curious to see if there was more that could be done further upstream to stop people getting to a crisis point, getting to a deteriorating place. And so we worked with Newton to look at, is there anything else that we can do? And we ended up splitting this into two bits, one around neighbourhood proactive care, and what we could do there, and the other more around the local authority, adults and health element. And Caroline will talk to that in a moment. But on the next slide, we see that 67% of the spend on health and social care in Leeds is attributed to 5% of the population. And so our hypothesis was, is there anything that we could do earlier on in their journey to stop them getting to the point where they're really accessing lots of health and social care? We've actually seen that 43% of spend on health and social care is accounted for by 1% of the population. So it's really important to look at, what are the journeys of the people who are in that 1%? Is there anything that we could do earlier to stop them getting to that point? So that's what we did. On the next slide, you will see that we did quite a number of deep dives, we looked at case reviews and so on. And basically, what that brought out is that 71% of people could have benefited from preventative support much earlier on in their journey. The top three reasons why they, whether we could have supported them would be anxiety and/or depression, frailty or health anxiety. And the top three recommended services that could have made an impact earlier on were around social prescribing, lower level mental health support, and enhanced or neighbourhood networks and that type of support. Now, we obviously have those in the city already, and our question now is to explore whether we've got the right amounts of those services in the right place, so that we stop people from deteriorating, that we keep people independent, and keep people well at home. Thank you. So the other part of the diagnostic has been specifically around adult social care. And there were three elements of this that very clearly the diagnostic has focused on. And the first bit, interlinking with the neighbourhood prevention, proactive prevention, has been what makes a difference for people who are receiving adult social care services around getting to and identifying people earlier. And the biggest factors that were identified for people that needing healthcare, more expensive healthcare, and also then higher levels of social care, was resultant from people falling. So, and also, the second being around breakdown of family carers looking after particularly older people. So we were looking at, what can we do around falls prevention? Not that we haven't, we're not, you know, zero, not doing anything position. There's a lot of work already happening across the system around falls prevention. But what more could we do to identify people well before they fall, so that we give them the sort of support that they might need to prevent falls? And similarly, how do we identify people who are at risk of a carer breakdown? Either because there are an elderly couple living together, one is a carer of the other elderly spouse, or where ageing children are looking after their older, a more frail parent. So how do we support people who are carers? How do we work with organisations like Carers Leeds to really support people and prevent sort of that need for crisis or emergency activity by supporting them to stay well? And then there was another element which was really around building on the work that we've done in intermediate care, Home First One, which is specifically about older people. How do we make sure that we're sort of supporting people to remain healthy, living healthily and independently in their own homes? How do we, you know, better utilise our neighbourhood networks, our third sector organisations that are already delivering care and support for older people? And another quite significant part of that is around how do we enhance more so our active recovery, which at the moment really focuses on people who are leaving hospital? How do we grow active recovery so that when people are in their communities, we actually even offer them an opportunity for reablement, should they come to us and say that their needs are increasing? How do we support them to remain as independent as possible? And then the third strand of the work that we did with Newton around the diagnostic was around whole life disability. And this is focusing on younger people, working age adults, and also transitions from children's services into adults. How do we make sure that those people that are already, young people and older working age adults who are already receiving care and support, how do we stop their needs from deteriorating further? So how do we keep them well? And it's a little bit of what we call demand management as well. So it's still part of prevention. They're already receiving services, but how do we prevent their needs from escalating? So those were the areas that have been particularly part of the adult social care diagnostic. And what that diagnostic has shown us is, again, quite significant opportunities to improve outcomes for people, and some of the data is there. 142 people more could be prevented from long term residential or home care as a result of preventing them from falling in the first place. 160 people potentially, you know, prevented from entering into long term care as a result of carer breakdown. Similarly, you know, 887 more people receiving reablement, active recovery, when they're in their own homes well before, and not just because they've ended up in hospital. And fewer people, 187 people, fewer having to go into long term residential and nursing because we're supporting them to stay independent in their own homes. And similarly, real opportunities around working age adults, fewer of them going into residential or even supportive living settings by offering them the right sort of support to live independently in their own homes. So a number of quite significant opportunities have been identified, both in terms of improving outcomes for people, but again, in terms of maximising how we utilise our budgets, given that, you know, we are in a position where we've got such significant financial challenges arising from increased demand and demographic changes. So really, sort of significant amount of work that we have identified through the diagnostic, that we now need to work on as part of Home First Phase Two. So we just wanted to give you an update on where we've got to in the move from Home First Phase One to Home First Phase Two, and what that now means around our trajectory of work going forward. So really, an opportunity to give you a little bit of a flavour, and also to, you know, ask you if you've got any questions, and then also how you'd like us to keep you informed of the journey that we now continue to go through.
Thank you very much, Caroline and the rest of the team. Just should have given councillor Arif a chance to introduce herself, because you came during the last item but not right at the start, so I'll let you introduce yourself now, and if you want to make any introductory remarks.
Hi, Chair, I'm Tessa Salma. I'm the exec member for adult social care, active lifestyles and culture. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is really positive. Thanks for bringing this. In my mind, it's like the holy grail of health work, because it's better for people and it's better for the budget. So that's really, really positive. I'm going to start with questions from councillor Blackburn, but if anyone else wants to ask questions, please indicate to me.
Can I say, it's a welcome report, and I'm glad to see you were actually doing something positive in that direction. But what he doesn't mention there is where you're having the difficulties with people. There's no mention of what kind of housing to come from. Are we taking that into consideration when we're looking at that? I'll give you an example. When I had my knee operation, my first knee operation, if I hadn't had my wife to look after me, I'd have probably had to go into wrist bike care, because I wouldn't have been able to move around my house because of how it's designed. Victorians didn't design houses with people with bad legs. And I just wondered, are we looking at the living accommodation of people?
Thank you very much, councillor Blackburn. Really good question. And we are, absolutely we are. One of the things that we learnt when we were doing the Home First Phase One was that actually having two housing officers working in the multidisciplinary setting within the hospital, in the transfer of care hub, actually really identified people who would likely be delayed in hospital because they have got housing related issues, so they need adaptations doing before they can be discharged back home again. And those two housing officers have really helped identify somebody's housing specific related needs really early on, so that we can then get on with, in discussions with our housing colleagues, get any adaptations needed, get aids in, get equipment in before a person gets discharged. So the learning from that has absolutely demonstrated that housing is a really significant cornerstone to keeping people living independently in their own homes. And we've got really good, strong work in place with our housing colleagues.
I mean, it's encouraging what you say there. I mean, as long as we can get the adaptations in as quick as possible, because quite clearly, somebody coming out of hospital, they're better in their own homes, they feel more comfortable in their own home, and that's where they want to be. They don't want to be somewhere else where they don't know.
Thank you. I'll take that last bit as a comment. I think it's probably well, well accepted. Okay, councillor Bromley, next, please.
Hi, thank you. And yeah, thank you again, Caroline, for being really thorough there. In terms of this report, asking for feedback going further. In terms of this report, asking for feedback going further, quotes from people that have actually received it, it'd be really like sort of connecting to know what a difference this approach has made. I echo in the thoughts of, you know, understanding as well realistically that not every scenario will necessarily be within their benefit to then just sort of leave them and go and be sort of periodic in and out. So in terms of where withholding the respect around that it deserves of having someone's own authenticity of their own decision making, how are we making sure that we are sensitively managing when there is a complete feedback about, sorry, I'm not wording this very well, wanting to have complete independence when actually they probably need more support, but then you're trying to respect that boundary? And how do we manage that? How is the council's approach to managing that in between stage?
Thank you very much councillor Bromley. I think your point around having real life quotes from people really brings a report to life, doesn't it? If I could just assure you that all the way through the Home First Phase One programme and including as we've done the diagnostic in Home First Two, we have evaluated people's own experiences, experiences of before and then subsequent to any changes being made. And we measure the impact by doing surveys, but also we've got PREMS. I can never remember what PREMS stands for, I'm looking at my health colleagues to help me out there.
Yeah, Person Reported Experience Measures, PREMS.
So all the way throughout, we do absolutely check with people, how are their experiences as a result of any support that they've needed, be it before going into hospital or in hospital or in our intermediate care services and our reablement services. So we do measure that and that's why we feel real great pride in the success that we've done, we've achieved with Home First, because that's what people are telling us. So yes, you're absolutely right, would have been really good to bring that to life and we'll remember that for future reporting. In terms of your question specifically about people who are to some extent resisting offers of support and help, where they clearly are frail or do need help but are saying no thank you, first and foremost, we absolutely have to respect people's own choices. If they've got capacity and they say thank you very much but no thank you, then we've got to ensure that we respect that. But we are also mindful that we've got safeguarding responsibilities and duties and, you know, we've seen a rise in self neglect. So how do we work with individuals to make sure that we're not imposing ourselves upon them, but that we are absolutely clear about the care and support that there is available to them? Many people don't want to come to statutory services, they don't want to go to social care, often they're reluctant to go to GPs. So have they got community networks? Are they utilising any resources that are in the communities? We've got fabulous third sector organisations, small little community organisations all the way through to the larger ones, we've got our neighbourhood networks. And we make sure that people have information about the resources that are available to them in their local community so that they feel perhaps more inclined to make those connections if they don't want to come to adult social care. The other thing we also do is that we have a very open referral process. So if neighbours are worried, if anybody's particularly worried that somebody is self neglecting or is, you know, at risk of not having their care needs met, we will ensure that our social work staff will go and do a wellbeing check. So we're always trying to be nosy and we're trying to say, look, we won't impose ourselves on you, but is there any help, any support? Here is what we can do. And then the other strand of this is our carers service. So we've got, we commission carers leads to do some really good engagement with people, outreach work with carers. And they employ people who just make sure that they're connecting with local communities, including actually being based in hospital as well, having a presence in hospitals, to reach out to families to say, look, we're here for you, to support you in the care that you might be providing for a member of your family. So just finding ways in which we can ensure that people understand what's available for them.
Thank you very much. Have you got a follow up councillor Bromley? No? Yeah, thank you very much, very comprehensive response. Thank you for that. Okay councillor Ritchie next.
Thank you, and it does look like a great scheme and I'm sure you're quite rightly proud of it and we're grateful for it. I'm interested in thinking sort of long term and strategically about sustaining this and growing this as we want to do. Is there any way that you can quantify the savings? Caroline did mention, we get people out of hospital, but you fill hospitals with the other people, so there's not a definite saving there, but there's obviously an improvement to patient care, which is crucial. But convincing government ministers and civil servants higher up the chain, they like to see a value, don't they, in a cost, a quantitative amount of saving? And so, yeah, I just wondered if anyone's able to put that to make, you know, strengthen the case for this. But I can also see within that, and it's great the team lead's approach and the talk of the lead's pound, but I can see one of the partners perhaps incurring more costs. So you get people out of hospital and then it falls onto social care and the local authorities. So again, how we sort of manage what a separate budget to make sure it's sustainable. And then just one other reflection on home care. I think it's really important that the quality that I know you're also passionate about, but it meets the specific needs. So I'm hearing of younger disabled people, for example, who are being put to bed at nine o'clock, and they don't want to go to bed at nine o'clock, but the care packages are such that, you know, fitting in the other work, that they have to go to bed at nine o'clock and, yeah, it's getting it right. So just because they're in their own home, it isn't necessarily still a perfect system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to answer the first part of the question then Sam? I'm very happy to be.
Okay, so I think that we can give projections of what the likely saving in inverted commas would be, but the approach that we've had has always been about, let's try and keep people well, let's try and get them home and use the money that's available in a different way, because we need to be cognisant of the growth projections of the population of Leeds. I suppose what gives me hope is the ten year plan, which is really based on improving neighbourhood health and encouraging different agencies across statutory sector, third sector to work together and use the money in the best possible way. And of course, the three major shifts in the NHS plan, one being from hospital to community. So that's signalling to me that the government really wants to see investment in that area. I think we'll have to wait a little while to see how the mechanics of that actually work. So our approach in Leeds has been very much about how can we provide a better experience for people, free a little bit of money so that we can meet the growing demand? Don't know if you want to add, Caroline?
A couple of points to add to that. We have what we call a sort of financial realisation, benefits realisation dashboard whereby we're reporting month by month, how many people have got out of hospital sooner than they would have done if we didn't have the programme? What's the financial benefit to LTHT? Even though it's not cashable, what is the cost avoidance and efficiency? And we've got that all the way through our key performance indicators. So we've got our own intermediate care beds that are jointly provided between LCC Adult Social Care and LCH, Leeds Community Health. And we can see that by becoming better at supporting people and getting people out as soon as they're ready, getting them back home again, actually saves the whole system quite a lot of money because we can, we're not reducing that bed capacity that we provide, but as a system, we've got fewer intermediate care beds commissioned by the ICB than we've had for a long, long time. And Helen might want to come in on that as well. But we can definitely demonstrate quite a significant financial benefit mainly to LTHT and to LCC. So councillor Ritchie, you mentioned that a lot of the pressure comes to adult social care. In fact, actually, this programme has helped adult social care to save quite a lot of money because previously people were staying in hospital longer than they needed to, they were deteriorating at a quicker rate, and then by default, they were ending up in long term residential or nursing care, we're getting more people back home again, getting a home care package, or even getting them home without any care and support needs, rather than them deteriorating and then ending up in long term care, which costs the local authority a lot more. So we are quite able to see quite a significant financial benefit. But as I say, the demand continues to increase, so the financial benefit isn't a cost saving directly, but it means that we can continue to deliver more. In terms of making government aware, we did a lot across our system, a lot of work with government and we went to various places where we talked about the Leeds Intermediate Care Programme. And we know that, you know, we're streeting and various other politicians have actually cited and quoted the success that Leeds has had as a system around intermediate care. So with every opportunity we get, we shout about the benefits we've had, not just from a financial perspective, but from outcomes for people as well. So we're doing our best to sort of show and demonstrate how valuable working as a system is. Certainly Meghan mentioned the shared care records and again, that is something that is actually quite unique. Our work around housing colleagues, working in our transfer of care hub is unique and we're sharing all of those experiences as learning. And, you know, we do feel that there is a level of listening by DHSC, Department of Health and Social Care, on our experiences. So we will continue to do more of that. You mentioned specifically about home care and, you know, people having a little bit of choice around the time in which they get to be taken out of bed if they need it, or even taken back to bed, their sleeping patterns. We know that, I mean, we commission home care from seven o'clock in the morning to 10 o'clock at night, that's the industry standard of delivery of home care. And we know that there are peaks in home care providers' demand for care workers, morning, lunchtime, evening and bedtime. And that's when the majority of the activity is happening, when the majority of people need care and support. And providers have got to do rotas that allow, you know, that mean that some people will have to go to bed, be put, you know, supported to go into bed a little bit earlier than other people. What we do try and do is encourage people who would be willing to actually have a direct payment. And if you have a direct payment and you employ your own personal assistant, or you even use that funding to appoint a home care provider to deliver, then you're, or supported living provider to deliver your care and support, then you might well get a more of a sort of flexible and more responsive service in terms of timing. And that's one of the real big sort of benefits of having a direct payment. But of course, we recognise that not everybody is willing to employ their own personal assistant and manage their own direct payment. So absolutely recognise that not everybody gets the service of their choice in terms of timing.
And we'll be coming on to direct payments, that's a good plug for those, isn't it, later on, I think?
Thank you very much. Can I see anyone else indicating? Jane, do you want to come in? If anyone else wants to indicate, indicate now.
Just a very brief question, factual more than anything. I mean, it's brilliant work. It's great to see that you're moving on to phase two. Expect more great things from you, I'm sure you'll deliver the projections. When will you, what timescale are we talking about when everybody that's eligible will be able to, who's in that bracket of frailty? Because you're starting out in a phased approach. So when will it actually be available for everybody in the city? And you keep talking about the growing, the demographic bomb kind of thing. So presumably that's been modelled, so you can predict that and what that growth will be like going forward?
Thanks, thanks for the question. I think in terms of everybody that's eligible, I think that's a kind of moving, bit of a moving feast. So as Sam was talking about in terms of the outcomes of the diagnostic, identifying the people who are most likely to benefit from this type of intervention is a piece of work that we're in the middle of at the moment. Currently, our aim, as I said earlier, is to get to six to 900 people by the end of this calendar year and really learn from that in terms of the business case for further rollout. And we would like to be able to offer it to everybody who could benefit from it, subject to that business case working. So I can't give you a definitive timescale at this point, but I think we will iterate it as we go along. And you asked about, what was your second question, sorry? Demographics? Yeah, 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 yeah. So yes, we've got that and we've built that in in terms of, and what we're constantly doing is updating our Leeds data model, which brings together data across our whole population to understand how that 47,000 people is changing as the demographics shift. So yes, that is factored in.
Thank you very much for that. That's been really helpful. And I think we've done part one of your question, which is comment on this and provide feedback and ask some questions. My take is we probably want to keep a watch in brief, like there's not something specific here, it's really positive work. I guess the only other thing I reflected, which is more of a comment than anything else, is keeping open to feedbacks. I think if our last item is anything to learn by hearing the feedback of people actually giving care is really important to make sure those channels are open. So thank you very much. We've got one more really important item, but I'm going to say we're going to need a 10 minute break before we do that. So we're going to start back at 10 to four and introduce the extra person coming to the table. So thank you very much. So thank you very much.
A little bit of the benchmarking, because this is the first kind of round of this assessment. It's just helpful to understand where Leeds City Council lie. And then we're going to talk about what's been happening since the assessment report was published in October. A little bit about the areas for development and then next steps. So as councillor said, we got seventy out of hundred. That means that overall we have a good rating. It's a four point scale, so inadequate requires improvement, good and outstanding. Next slide please. In terms of where Leeds is, so that's the distribution of all the currently published reports. So not every local authority has had an assessment yet. So we're in the good, so above sixty-four is a good rating. As you can see, there's a kind of real peak around the sixty-four, so on that threshold. We're in the middle of good and there's only been currently two authorities which have received an outstanding rating and only two that have received inadequate. So the rest have been good or requires improvement. Next slide please. Sorry, I keep looking at my slides, but I'm not. In terms of where we are in the region, so majority so far have had a good rating. Two have had a required improvement rating and one has had an inadequate. So we're sort of in the middle there with North Yorkshire getting the best score eighty-one, but not quite in the outstanding score. So next slide please. In terms of core cities, only four have had an assessment and two of those were part of the pilot. So they're not quite, it wasn't exactly the same experience. So Nottingham, Birmingham had an assessment during the pilot phase. Of the scores that have been published, Bristol, Birmingham, Nottingham and Leeds, we have the highest currently. Just to give a kind of sense of what the other core cities are scoring. Next slide please. In terms of the, since the assessment report's been published, so it was published fifteenth of October. We've been looking at, looking at it, it's like fifty page document, looking at all of the areas for improvement. Last week we had a session with the Adults and Health Senior Leadership Team, looking at those areas, trying to map them to work that's already happening, identifying any gaps to develop that improvement plan. Obviously, we've brought the report to scrutiny today. It's going to the executive board tomorrow. And kind of closing off the work around the report, we've got a celebration event with frontline staff, everyone who's involved in the assessment process on the ninth of December. Next slide. So in the report that was submitted, it covers the areas for strengths, but I'm going to talk through some of the key areas for improvement. So these are taken from the assessment report. Many of them already had existing work and plans around them that had been, some of those have been to scrutiny board as well. And CQC recognised this in the report, that these areas had kind of plans around them. The other thing I should note is that the assessment framework, as we said earlier, is nine quality statements. So we received good in seven of those. Not all of these areas for improvement are in the areas where we didn't receive good. So some of these would sit in an area that was overall rated as good, just for context. So I'll run through the eight areas. Number one, assessment and reviews. So the report identifies that there's still long waiting times and timeliness issues around assessment and reviews. For unpaid carers, there is a note about the consistency. So people have a mixed experience of the carers that they spoke to in terms of the support offer. Round advocacy, again, there was a mixed consistency of use in terms of what people's experience was of accessing and using advocacy support. In terms of intermediate care and rehabilitation services, there were two points around some of the performance against national measures that we were not above the national performance. Next slide please. There was a point around information and advice, so that's about ensuring that access to information is accessible and as kind of diverse as it needs to be. So a focus on not just on digital information advice. Direct payments, obviously there's a low uptake of direct payments in Leeds and that's an area that we need to, we have been focusing on, we need to continue to. Market shaping, sufficiency and capacity. There are several areas that we identified as part of our self-assessment that we need to bolster the provision there. So that was recognised in the report. And again, for safeguarding, just ensuring that data sharing across partners is consistent. They spoke to some partners who had not had, didn't have the access to the data that they needed. And then there was some feedback around how we share, sorry, feedback around safeguarding referrals and outcomes with people. So we're looking at those and we're making sure that we have an improvement around all of those areas. But just to note as well, there's obviously other work that we're doing to, across adult social care and adults and health in terms of improvement. So it's not just that we will focus on these areas in the future. Next slide please. So in terms of next steps, as I said, it's collating existing plans and making sure that they cover everything that was in the assessment report into a single improvement plan, so we can track progress. That will be managed and overseen by the Director of Adults and Health, by the Adults and Health Directorship Leadership, sorry, Directorate Leadership Team Meetings. Would like to return to scrutiny board if appropriate to update on progress against that plan. CQC are currently reviewing their approach to assessment and they're due to essentially announce what the second or the next phase of this assessment framework will be in April. When that's published, we'll obviously respond in terms of our preparations to make sure that we're well prepared for the next phase of assessment. And we're also planning a regional peer review in the summer, spring or summer of next year as well. So that will continue to focus on those areas for improvement.
Thank you. Just to add a couple of observations around the process. So we know that CQC wanted to talk to people who access services, but the number of people that they spoke to was actually very, very small. And a lot of their judgments were around the information they might have got from two or three different individuals, maybe a few more in the way of carers. So we know that and I think that it's widely recognised that CQC's whole framework has been criticised because it is very, very narrow in its focus on people's own experiences. And the other important point to make is that that they were heavily reliant on data that we have to complete and return, but it was data from twenty-two, twenty-three. It wasn't the most recent data. And that certainly impacted in terms of our assessments and reviews because we have recently done a lot of work around improving waiting times for assessments and reviews. But that has come more latterly. That wasn't, hadn't taken hold as sufficiently in the reporting period that they relied on. The same with intermediate care and rehabilitation services. Since the data that they were looking at, we have done a huge amount of work, as you've heard, around the Home First Programme and really quite significant improvements in people's outcomes in intermediate care and in rehabilitation. And that wasn't necessarily taken account of. We did tell them, we did show them the progress that we made, but they did form their judgment on a dataset that was of previous years. And they've done that because they have to make sure that they've got a consistent approach when they go and see all different local authorities. So we understand why they were using data from, which is now pretty much out of date. But I suppose for your information, I just want to let you know that we have made some really significant improvements on some of the data returns. That said, there are others that we haven't made such good improvements. We have tried to do our level best around direct payments take up. We've got a huge programme of work around improving direct payments take up. It's gradually improving, but it's very, very small. And we continue to do some work on that. Again, we're not alone in this, you know, direct payments is quite unpopular for many people. And we've seen those local authorities that used to do really well in direct payments actually not doing so well anymore. So, but that doesn't mean that we won't absolutely keep our foot on the pedal on that and continue to do more around it. So our work isn't done by any means. And as James has alluded to, we really want to learn from sector-led improvement. So we are looking to plan a regional sort of peer review. We have yet to decide what that will be on, but I think it ought to be on those areas of our action plans and our improvement plan to see what progress we're making, where we're coming unstuck. A little bit more focus around hearing people's voices as well. And so we'll try and build up a sort of a programme of peer reviewing that focuses in those particular areas. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Really helpful and I think it's worth saying it's really positive, overall really positive. So must thank you from me and the board to the team. I think it's good to see us, that we've been a compassionate city. I also welcome the focus on the improvements. Just one thing that stood out to me is, so one of the twos on page twenty-nine of the pack is supporting people to lead healthier lives. And I guess in my mind, that's diet and activity as well as other things, lifestyle choices. But it didn't appear to be in the eight areas for improvement. So I don't know if you could just comment on that, but obviously it's an important area. And members, if you want to speak, do indicate.
Yeah, so I mean, I have to be honest with you, that was the one that I was very, very disappointed around. We could have gone back to CQC to say, look, you know, your narrative in your report doesn't support that judgment of a two. We had a little bit of a conversation of that nature, but it was based on the, what CQC heard from a small number of carers. And it was pretty much carers saying that, well, if we've had an assessment, we didn't know about it. Or no, we've not been offered an assessment. Or we've not had consistency of support. So we absolutely know that, but the people that they identified to speak to were nominated through Carers Leeds. Now, Carers Leeds support people that don't necessarily also then come to adult social care for support. So a large number of carers that receive support from Carers Leeds have never come to us for an assessment. So they might well turn around and say, no, we've not had an assessment of need. But I absolutely agree, I mean, the waiting times, we could understand, we could understand that, you know, we've got a whole programme of waiting well and we are on a trajectory of improvement. I think the bit around supporting people to remain living independently at home was the area that we were particularly keen to say, look, well, we think we're doing a really good job, but it didn't come across. One area that we know that we're doing better than many local authorities is in equity of experience. And again, that is people themselves saying, you know, our specific needs based on our protected characteristics are taken into consideration, we're getting culturally sensitive or appropriate services. So I've sort of felt that we got a bit of more of a balance because certainly the point around whether people felt that there was equity was commented on a notice of being really positive. But yes, more work to do around ensuring that we can gauge and we can demonstrate that people who receive care and support actually get a good experience as a result of our input.
Thank you very much. Okay, councillor Gibson?
Thank you for report, for this good report, very thorough and thanks, thanks as well for everything that you've done to make sure that Leeds is in such a good position. I mean, we had a lot of stats there. I reckon, I've done a little bit of totting off, I think that it makes us in the top thirty-five percent of local authorities. So an extra stat for you there and certainly, as you've already said, one of the best core cities. The other two that got, the two that got outstanding, I believe, are in London. And without getting too much of a northerner, you know, London gets all the money, doesn't it? So no wonder that, anyway. So we should all be very proud of it. Well done. Thank you very much and may the long, the good work continue. I do want to raise a couple of issues, let me get my notes up. The first one being carers. Now, we had in the last report, clearly you're doing a lot of work around this. My experience, as you know, I'd worked for Leeds City Council as a social worker, was that the services were exemplary. However, there were gaps for carers. You know, Carers Leeds do a good job and, you know, sort of using that, what was the terminology at the time? Strength-based approach, social work, you know, referring to our third sector partners was great and we're in a fortunate position that we do have so many really strong third sector partners in the city. However, I, you know, some of the carers that I worked with did feel let down by sort of referring on and were, and asked for consideration of personal budgets that essentially never materialised. Where are we with, do we have a percentage of carers that have had a, received personal budgets and how they're using them flexibly? Do we know a little bit about that? I'll just add on to that, that, you know, the failure of nationally of us to support carers adequately, given what they contribute to our economy and our social services is a total scandal. It is not, Leeds City Council is doing as much as it can, but it's not really our responsibility. I know it is under the Care Act, but you know, nationally we need to do a lot more. I know that this has been considered as part of the Casey Report, so at least this government's doing something about it. But it's been left for far too long without, withinaction over the past fourteen years. I know, but it's left again to local authorities like us to do something about it. So I just want to caveat that question with that. I'm unsure, why is there such a push for personal, for direct payments? People don't want them. My experience was that people don't want them, they're difficult to manage, you know, it's extra stress. If you're going through a crisis or a difficult time, managing a direct payment's not an easy, sometimes or it may appear not to be an easy thing to do. I know that there's, we go much further than other local authorities that I've worked for to be able to support people to get onto direct payment and manage them in a way that's really simple. I don't know what more we can do and I don't understand why that's a metric for the CQC that seems to have pulled our score down a little bit. I just don't understand the, I don't understand the rationale behind it at all. Finally, I just want to mention the waiting for assessment and equipment age. It is something that I've experienced with my constituents directly as well. Can you just say a little bit more about what we're doing about that? Thanks.
Thanks. Just before you come in, I do think there's something on the direct payments. I think we had a long discussion about direct payments a few meetings ago. And I think broadly, as a whole, we, I certainly agree with you, James, councillor Gibson. So I think maybe let's not dig back in because ultimately that's what they're assessing on. I agree with you and I think the board agrees and you gave a really clear response before. So if we part that as a, that's how it is and respond to the other stuff.
Thank, thank you. But it was councillor Ritchie's point earlier about, you know, somebody who receives home care, doesn't want to be put to bed at, you know, I say put to bed, you know, supported to go into bed at nine o'clock in the evening, would rather stay up a bit later. There are people who would really benefit from a direct payment, but the point is still right that it's actually a bit of a burden, a bit of a responsibility in terms of employing your own PAs. And that's what puts people on off, but it is seen as very much the ultimate in choice and control. And that's the reason why. So you asked specifically councillor Gibson around carers and carers taking up personal budgets. Most carers don't need a support service in their own right. What they ask for is a break from caring and the break comes by way of respite to the individual. So it's the individual that needs the care that gets the service. From that, the carer benefits because then they can have regular breaks. But there aren't that many carers that will need a personal budget to go and buy something or buy care and support in their own right. Some carers get it by way of a holiday, but that's a one-off usually. It's not a regular personal budget. So that's why the take-up of personal budgets for carers is quite low. We can provide you with specific data if you want in terms of the numbers, if that would help. I haven't got that to hand, but we do collate that. So if that would be helpful, very happy to provide that information. And we can do it retrospectively as well to see if there is an improved take-up or not. But the point is right around, you know, support for carers, there is a gap. Our funding is limited and whilst we haven't reduced significantly the amount of money we provide to Carers Leeds, for example, they have seen a reduction, a ten percent reduction in our funding to Carers Leeds. We're asking them to do more for less. And therefore, you know, it's an acknowledgement of the current financial pressures that we're under. You asked specifically about people waiting for assessment. Did you ask specifically about waiting for equipment? Assessments for equipment. Right, okay. I don't know, Shona, if you're able, if you've got any information at hand to be able to answer that.
So at the time that the report was published or the data year that it was selected was twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, we did have significant backlogs in occupational therapy assessments. It's the occupational therapist who will assess for equipment. We have significantly reduced those weights now and we're continuing to reduce those weights through a number of activities. One is recruitment, which we have had a significantly strong story on over the last three years. Having had significant vacancies three years ago, we are in a much better position. We're also looking at how we might use our own registered staff in a more flexible way. So we're implementing a policy which was developed by the Royal College of Occupational Therapists, which supports people to take a more flexible approach, which will, we believe, further reduce the weights for assessment in the backlog, but also make it quicker to have an assessment undertaken as we go through. And therefore we will not be adding to the backlog. So that's quite a strong story in terms of our support for people. Once people are assessed as requiring equipment, the equipment service itself has a set of standard delivery time scales and it meets those delivery time scales. There are a number of people who require specialist equipment which has to be ordered specifically for them. And so the weight there is the time it takes to order and then deliver that equipment. But that isn't, that's an unavoidable delay because it's special equipment that's delivered to people. So we're recognising that the occupational therapy weight is a significant aspect of it. One of the things that we do do while somebody's waiting for an assessment, for, for example, bathing, we will have a conversation with them about what might help them while they wait for the assessment and we will support them with other equipment that's easier to provide, such as a perching stool, other equipment that will enable them to be clean, even if they can't access a bath yet. So we do do a kind of a two-stage approach to supporting people's needs. As we go through the next year and we start to really reduce those waiting lists, I think we'll hopefully get to a much better position. Thank you.
Okay, Jane, next please.
I'll be quick. I just wanted to add my congratulations, really good report, well deserved, great leadership. And you know your service inside out and you've come here and shared the areas that you knew needed improving and I've been working on that, so just to acknowledge that. I was surprised when I read through the report in terms of the carer support, because when you looked at the national, what the quotes of the national figures, they seemed equivalent to other areas. So then to come up with that, so it's kind of explains it when you're saying it was based on the interviews with a couple of people, which is not really good methodology. But then my final point really was something that kind of reflects our experience in Health Watch and that is about being careful not to digitally exclude people. So in terms of your information and advice, we have published a report recently about people feeling digitally excluded, you know, across health and care services. So I think it's really important to think about other methods to deliver messages and information.
If I could come in, one of the things that James did very, very soon after we received our report was to compare our, the analysis in our report around support to carers with that of Camden. Camden being one of those local authorities that got the outstanding. And it was pretty much word for word similar. Honestly, I'm not, I'm not lying, it was similar. Their analysis around their support to carers was, the wording was very similar to our own analysis. Yet we got quite a lot of negative comments in the report because maybe one or two carers, well, we're pretty confident that one or two carers reported a negative experience. But when you look at the reports and you look at the difference, you know, there isn't any difference whatsoever. But the outcome, the judgement and the scoring is markedly different. So, and that's been fed back by many local authorities to our CQC colleagues. So yes, digital inclusion or digital exclusion was absolutely something that the CQC inspectors asked us quite a lot of information about. And we provided evidence of where we are ensuring that we are making information accessible. It's available by telephone, in person, at our hubs, in various different formats and it is not, there's nothing that we provide that is exclusively done in a digital way.
Thanks very much for that, Caroline. Okay, and then councillor Bromley. If anyone else wants to indicate, speak, please let me know now.
Thank you, yeah, and I just want to echo the same words that have been used so far as well in terms of really congratulations and a thank you Caroline for all of your work into the team. I think that it's sad and frustrating to hear on your behalf really, how much this feels like a letdown because in actual fact, I think we hear at this board so often your feedback and information on how well you are approaching all aspects and I think not just things that we flag, but things that keep coming up to your door that is inevitable really. In terms of, I just wanted to touch on the information part and advice. It just sort of seemed to me as that being part of the improvement to be continued and the fact that the feedback came from Carers Leeds. How are we, how are we working to make sure then that every part that we are working with has all the information there? So that they're aware of how to work with us best? And making sure that that's like a really smooth transition of information? With an understanding and a respect that we as a council are going to be a service that is essentially needed. So therefore it's like statutory information that everybody should have. And therefore then maybe that's part of the improvement that actually, you know, any third sector organisations to are fully informed about what we do.
Thank you very much councillor Bromley. Yes, absolutely. Our commissioning officers work and commissioning staff work directly with Carers Leeds. We commission the service from Carers Leeds. We have got as part of our EDI priorities as well, how we improve information and advice and accessible information and advice for all of our communities, including carers. One of the things that we've been doing very recently is that we've got our Leeds directory. It's an online directory, but it's been revamped. It's got a really good, sort of much, much better layout, it's much more accessible. And what we do is when we work with our third sector partners, so Carers Leeds and all of our neighbourd networks and our other third sector organisations, we're absolutely ensuring that they can see what's on the Leeds directory so that they can communicate that to people that come to them. So that they don't, so people are not relying on finding that information through the Leeds directory themselves, but that through our third sector organisations, that they know how to navigate and get as much information as possible so that they can share that with people when they're making those inquiries. So it's making sure that all the information So it's making sure that all the information we've got is in a central place, it's located somewhere. Now, it has to be done online because leaflets go out of out of date very, very quickly. The world keeps changing, we keep updating. And, you know, stacks of leaflets in GP surgeries or the like is just not going to be particularly accessible in its own right. We do provide leaflets, we provide leaflets in Braille and accessible format as well. And we will do that whenever asked. But our biggest sort of gauge in this is making sure that our organisations that we work with know where the information is, how to access it and therefore how to share that with people when people need it.
Thank you. I just want to say I'll make sure to feed that in with our conversation with AGK as well that's coming to the next community committee. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's, I feel like is a good report and a good set of questions. Thanks for that. Yes, so thank you to the team, particularly thank you to James. I know you've done a lot of work organising this whole thing, collating data, all that sort of thing, which is really important. And if it doesn't happen, we don't get a good rating. So that's really good and we appreciate that. And we'll close that item and move on to item ten, which is on page one-one-three, which is work programme. I know we've talked about a couple of things we want to put on the agenda through this meeting. But if members want to make any comments about the work programme, now is your opportunity. I'm seeing no one indicating. So with that, I'd like to thank everyone for attending today. I think we've had a good meeting, good discussions, important discussions. And I'll see you all next time. Before, we've got another meeting before Christmas. Yeah, we've got a working group before Christmas, so I'll save my festive cheer for then. Okay, take care.